On March 17th of order, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item tonight, we have a swearing in ceremony for a new firefighter and some on-call officers. So Chief, please take it away.
Thank you for being here, everybody. We want to swear in some, a new fire, a career firefighter. One on Mike, Mike Sysek. We're going to swear in the new on-call captain, who's actually an old, very familiar face to the town of Maynard, Jerry Byrne, who recently retired as a career firefighter. And we're fortunate enough that he's decided to stay on and use his wisdom and experience to help train some of the newer guys. Come on up Jerry. Then we have Matthew James. Come on up. Matthew's a new on-call firefighter. These guys don't have their uniforms yet, but they'll also be joining us. And then Ralph Rodriguez. Ralph and Matt both live locally, and we're glad to have them aboard. So we're going to have Diane swear them in, and then Representative Hogan has something for each one of them.
I'm going to have you raise your hand. Do you, Michael Sysek, Gerald Byrne, Ralph Rodriguez, Matthew James, and Taylor Silver solemnly swear to do your duty as firefighters for the town of Maynard to the best of your ability to serve the citizens of the town of Maynard with compassion, courage, and integrity, and to uphold the laws and constitution of the United States of America, the state of Massachusetts, and the town of Maynard?
I do.
You are now official this morning. I just need each of your signatures.
Very easy.
Okay. Oh, thank you. Well, who do it say? Another time? So you can come over and get some?
Great.
Yep. Yep. Put on the red and the X.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
That's good. That boy. Thank you. It's all right. Stay where you stand.
Thank you.
Congratulations, everyone. I have some citations here from the House of Representatives. I think Jerry got one very recently, and yet here we are again, Jerry. I'm being here right now to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Michael Sysek on your swearing as a firefighter for the town of Maynard, or Captain Jerry Byrne for your swearing in as a firefighter, an on-call firefighter, and your continued service to the town of Maynard.
Thank you.
And to Matthew James, your swearing in as an on-call firefighter for the town of Maynard.
Thank you.
And Ralph Rodriguez, your swearing in as an on-call firefighter. The entire membership of the House of Representatives extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Congratulations, everyone, and welcome.
That was it. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thanks, Becky. Thank you, John.
Good to see you again. Thank you, folks. Thank you.
All right. Next up on our agenda is comments.
I appreciate it.
And there'll be comments from the audience.
Sure. Mr. Tom.
Yes, I would like to ask the Board of Selectmen if we are running the town or the utilities are running the town. Back in November, I had an incident with our electrical supplier, which hasn't been resolved yet. And in the process of replacing one pole with another and shoring up the old pole, they removed one of the streetlights that I believe the town is responsible for. I recently requested the Board of Public Works to have the light replaced. They tell me that they are not responsible for that. It was referred to the police department. Called the police department, they weren't responsible. They referred me to the fire department. Checked with the fire department, and I, up to this time, have had no resolution to the problem. I happen to be a businessperson in town. Have owned a business now, going on to 5050 year come the 1st of July. And I don't believe that the utilities, as powerful as they are, should treat their ratepayers the way they do. And I just want to make that as a public comment, so people are aware, that they don't really give a damn about the ratepayers when they create the problem. But it's very frustrating to think that we own the light, they took it down. I don't even know where that light is. You happen to know, Mr. Administrator?
I don't.
No? You're probably not even much aware of the problem. But I would like to see some resolution within the next six months, maybe? Thank you.
We have any other comments from the audience? All right, well, on to agenda item number three, which is approval of minutes. We have three sets of minutes. The first is regarding the February 9th joint meeting we had with the Finance Committee. Anybody have any comments or edits to those minutes?
No.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of February 9th, 2015, as shown. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes five, zero. And then we have the minutes of the regular meeting of March 3, 2015. Do we have any questions or comments on those minutes? All right, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February 14, 2015, as shown.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes five, zero. And then we have the minutes of the regular meeting of March 3, 2015. Do we have any questions or comments on those minutes? All right, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March 3, 2015, as shown.
Second.
Lots of good seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes five, zero. We have correspondence items as our next item on the agenda, and we made it past 26. So I'll make a motion that we accept correspondence items A through AA as listed on the agenda for the March 17th meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes five, zero. And then we have the minutes of the regular meeting of March 3, 2015. Do we have any questions or comments on those minutes? All right, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March 3, 2015, as shown.
Second.
Lots of good seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes five, zero. We have correspondence items as our next item on the agenda, and we made it past 26. So I'll make a motion that we accept correspondence items A through AA as listed on the agenda for the March 17th meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes five, zero. And then we have the minutes of the regular meeting of March 3, 2015. Do we have any questions or comments on those minutes? All right, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March 3, 2015, as shown.
Second.
Lots of good seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes five, zero. We have correspondence items as our next item on the agenda, and we made it past 26. So I'll make a motion that we accept correspondence items A through AA as listed on the agenda for the March 17th meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No? All in favor? Motion passes five, zero. Do we have a consent agenda involving special permit for opening day parade and relay for life awareness effort? I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes five, zero. All right, item six on our agenda is a license to enter and use town-owned land for a dog park. Kevin, you want to key this one up?
Sure. So, Mr. Chair, as you mentioned, we have a, this is the first renewal license for the license to enter and use town-owned land for the purpose of the dog park on Waltham Street. Our last renewal, our initial license was granted for a time period, a little bit less than a year. They gave it when they actually went operational. But the license agreement you have before you is from January 1st until December 31st of 2015, with the same restrictions as far as the use of when the park will actually be open, which will be from April 1st until November 30th. Aside from that, there's a couple of just form changes within the actual agreement that you folks have seen, and nothing of any substance has changed in this renewal agreement. They've provided proof of certificate of liability insurance as listed as the appendix exhibits, as well as the park rules and the license premises detail. Again, beyond that, there's no change from last year's agreement. We do have a representative of Maydog with us this evening. I don't know if the board has any further questions.
I just have a real quick question, Kevin. If, is there anything that allows the management, per se, of Maydog to delay the opening of the park? For example, I was actually having a conversation with somebody just this week with concern about the mud and everything else that might be there, that we might, that they may not be able to open it April 1st, yet if the guidelines say April 1st, somebody comes in and says, "No, I can be here at April 1st." Is there something that allows that?
So that's just the town's authorization. The Board of Directors for Maydog will make that decision whether or not they actually decide to open April 1st. They're essentially the ones that are maintaining and operating the park. So that, the board may decide. I do, I do know there's a planned sort of effort to kind of revitalize the area towards the end of March, but given certainly the winter we had, et cetera, there might be some issues that, that may delay the opening.
But they have, the Maydog Board has that leeway.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Currently, it's under secured control by Maydog. The town has a key, but essentially, they open when they, when they deem it suitable.
Okay.
Are the rules in Dropbox?
I don't know if that made it into Dropbox.
You just hiding them?
Yeah. It's the same rules with the...
Just for fun. Stick them in there, will you?
It might be...
When you get a chance.
Did you have them with this one? Hook empty. Yeah.
I just was looking for them because it said they were there, but I didn't see them.
I think it's because it was attached with the original agreement.
No, it's not. Not of any importance.
Any other questions, comments from the board?
No.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the, if you can get, agreement with Maydog and the town for the license to enter and use town-owned land for a dog park, effective April 1st, 2015 through November 30, 2015.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second from the Silva. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes five, zero. Next up on the agenda, item number seven. We have a discussion about 129 Parker Street and a presentation from the Representative's Capital Group. As a preamble to that discussion, I have a presentation as well. Is that all set?
It is. Zach, do you have the presentation, please?
Okay, so Capital Group is owner representative for the property at 129 Parker Street, and they're here tonight to present their latest ideas about developing the parcel. I'd like to take a few minutes to go back on the history of the parcel and the actions the town has taken regarding development on that parcel, just so everybody here on the board, everybody in the room, and the viewing audience is all on the same footing in regard to assumptions and knowledge. And I'd like to start back in 1995 with a picture up on the screen there. You know, the 129 Parker site is 58 acres, has three big office buildings, and it was built by Digital Equipment Corp. Back in 95, digital was, you know, on its way down, but there was still activity at that site, and cars can be seen parked in that photo. We go to the next slide. Here we are in 2005, and back then, you know, it was the same site, same office buildings, only there weren't any tenants. The current owner at that time was John Walters and his company Chartwell Properties, and he had purchased it a few years before. And he had found that, or he had come to the conclusion that he just couldn't lease standalone office space in this area. He needed something else to attract tenants. He needed a mixed-use development to attract tenants to the office space. So he was looking for, trying to get retail and housing on that site. Now, back in '05, the zoning for that site was just the basic industrial zoning. So he could have his office buildings. He could build a bank if he wants. He could have a warehouse, but he couldn't have any residential space, couldn't have a supermarket, he couldn't have a Starbucks, he couldn't have a Staples, none of that. So he came to the town asking for help on developing the site and rezoning. And what came out of that was called the N B O D. If we go to the next slide, the Neighborhood Business District overlay, or Overlay District, sorry. And this was a zoning change, and it applied only to that one parcel. And the preamble of that zoning regulation is shown up there, and it's basically to encourage mixed-use development, but to provide conditions and safeguards for the town for the development. And it was, that zoning was approved in 2006. If we go to the next slide, we can see what the zoning allows. It does allow some residential use. It allows 100 units of multifamily residential. It also allows unlimited healthcare facility use, which in our zoning regs is defined as a clinic or a hospital. So theoretically, somebody could build a hospital there under the N B O D. It also allowed a series of retail uses, restaurant, garden, center, supermarket, health clubs, all sorts of things. They were restricted to maximum size, so there could be a supermarket, but it couldn't be more than 75,000 square feet. There could be restaurants, but none could be more than 10,000 square feet. The N B O D zoning regulation also is kind of a mix and match on the retail. They can have whatever mix they want. The total can't be more than 175,000 square feet. If we go to the next slide, you can see some of the safeguards that the N B O D language puts in for the town. And it does this by requiring several steps for development. One is that, you know, prior to development, there has to be a concept plan that has to be approved by town meeting. Second thing is, actually, before that concept plan goes to town meeting, there has to be the outline for a development agreement between the property owner and the Board of Selectmen. And then third, there has to be a site plan approval of the, of the development plan, which is something done for most, but not all projects that happen in town.
Go to the next slide, please.
So all those things got done. The N B O D zoning got passed in '06. The development agreement got passed at the end of '06. The concept plan got approved in early '07, and there was a site plan approval by Planning Board in late 2009. I just want to touch a little bit on each of those. We'll go to the next slide. The development agreement, also called the memorandum of agreement. It describes a concept plan, you know, the basic proposal by John Walters back then was 175,000 square feet of retail and 100 residential units. It describes various terms, you know, who's going to pay for consultants and legal costs. It describes some financial gifts he was going to provide to the town. It described infrastructure improvements, what they needed to be, who was going to pay for them, when they were going to happen. It covered traffic improvements. It covered some water and sewer improvements. It covered some conservation easements. The development agreement also provided some additional use restrictions above and beyond the N B O D language, one of which was there can't be more than three restaurants on the site, another of which was there can't be more than 200 bedrooms in the housing. In addition, the development agreement said that it applies to the entire 58 acres. It also said that it runs with the properties, so that it applies to any future owners as well.
If we move to the next slide.
The concept plan, crudely shown here, was basically this. They were looking to save two of the three existing buildings. Those are shown in green. And then they were going to build 175,000 square feet of retail with the large supermarket in the back near the PK2 building. And then they were going to put some housing units, 100 housing units, in one of the corners of the site. And that's the concept plan that was approved at town meeting in February of 2007. Now, in September of 2009, there was a site plan approval. If we go to the next slide, it illustrates the site plan approval was only for phase one of the development, so it was only for the northerly part of the site. And it was essentially the same amount of retail, although it was moved slightly. And the zoning regulations do allow Planning Board to approve site plans if things are moved around a little bit, so long as it's in keeping with what was approved by town meeting. But as I said, you know, this only applied, this approval only applied to the phase one, the northerly stuff, the subtlety stuff and the housing and the other office building. None of that was included in that original site plan approval. So, the next slide, please. Here it is, 2015. Where are we today? Well, John Walters is gone. There's a new owner of the property and a new representative of that owner. The most noticeable thing about the property is the fact that there's only one of the three buildings still left standing, PK2 in the back. The other two are gone, although you could see the pads there in the aerial. What we do have today is the N B O D zoning is still there. The concept plan approval is still out there. The development agreement's still in effect. We do, we have, over the past few years, had some starts and stops with discussions and presentations at town meeting, vision surets, you know, ad hoc committee, but those have produced some good, good ideas and some not-so-good ideas, but really, those items are, you know, don't have any standing for the development of the parcel at this moment. What's in place now is the N B O D zoning and the concept plan and the development agreement. So theoretically, if somebody wanted to come in and build John Walters' plan for 175,000 square feet of residential and 100 housing units, they pretty much have the approvals they need to do that. Since Capital Group is here tonight, I'm guessing that that's not quite what they want. They have a different idea of what plan they can provide that would be better for the town. And in a moment or two, I'm going to shut up and let them talk, but I just want to say that what I hope for tonight is that we listen to their presentation. And one thing I would like to avoid, especially from the board, is that we avoid the desire to comment on the presentation and try to give our opinions about good and bad elements of it, because frankly, it's just a little too early for that. I mean, we don't have the information, the full information. This will be the first time we see it, and our conversation, you know, just won't be based on intelligent decisions. So, I mean, we often act without a full amount of information, but I hope we don't do so tonight. We will have a chance in the near future to discuss the project in more detail. One thing I do plan on doing is asking the board for permission to authorize hiring of somebody who can do an economic analysis for us of the proposal that we hear tonight, assuming their proposal's in sufficient detail. Because frankly, the decision about whether the project, or any project, would provide a net financial benefit to town is a pretty important one for a no-go-go decision. And at some point in the future, the board's going to have to decide whether we want to just stick with the approval that's already set for the site, the existing zoning and development agreement, or maybe everything we're going to hear tonight is going to be wonderful, and we're going to decide, wow, the best thing for the town is if we start throwing staff time and consultant money at the project to make it happen. Or maybe we're going to hear some good things, and we think to ourselves, if we tweak it some, then that's the time to start throwing staff time and consultant money at the project to make it happen. So, I'm going to stop talking now. I hope you all listened well, and I hope we hear some exciting things. So you guys are up.
And once you get ready, if you could make sure you introduce yourselves.
I will take, yeah, as soon as he gets set up. Well, I can do that as Mr. DePetry is setting up. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, my name is Angelo Catanzaro. I've been before this board and other boards in this town before in connection with this project. I represent Capital Group, the developer and the owner of the property. About two or three weeks ago, we met informally with the chairman of the board, the town administrators, and the town planner to discuss what we, some recent changes and our new concept for what we think is an appropriate development at this site. We felt at that time, at that meeting, that our plan was fairly well-received, but it was the opinion of the chairman and of the town administrator and the town planner that the next step would be to make a more formal presentation of what we would like to do at this site to the board and to the public, so that everyone could know where we are at. With me this evening is Mr. Robert DePetry, who was one of the principals of the developer, and attorney Robert Russo, who is our affordable housing consultant. Mr. DePetry is going to go through our proposal with the board, and both Attorney Russo and myself would be available to answer any questions that any members of the board or the public may have regarding what our proposal is. In commenting on what Mr. Krancher had, has just reviewed, we are pretty much in agreement that in order to proceed with the proposal that we have, there will need some further permitting. There may be a necessity for some amendments to the agreement. We may need a new concept plan. We may need some additional zoning to include some of the uses that we think are appropriate. But that's not our purpose this evening. Our purpose this evening is to lay out what we would like to do, and once we get that laid out, then we will have discussions directly with Special Town Council, John Whitten, who I've already been engaged in some discussions with as to what is the most appropriate mechanism to get to the end, which hopefully, we all agree upon. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. DePetry, who can give a brief overview of what we propose for this site.
Thank you. First thing I thought we'd do is just go back through the initial approvals on the project, to sort of give our perspective of, you know, where we think we are in the As Mr. Chairman said before, in early 2007, the Maynard Town Meeting approved the concept plan, which is this plan shown on the first page of your handout, approving some N B O D uses on a portion of the property where the developer was seeking to develop uses under section 9.3 of the Maynard zoning bylaws, the Neighborhood Business Overlay District. Developer sought and received approval from Special Town Meeting to build up to 175,000 feet of retail space and up to 100 residential housing units. In addition to these N B O D uses, the developer was redeveloping other portions of the site, which housed a 400,000-foot, two-story commercial industrial building and a 50,300-square-foot single-story building. These buildings were being redeveloped using the underlying industrial zoning on the property. This plan would have resulted in a total project build-out of 758,270 square feet. As part of the concept plan approval, the developer was required into memorandum of agreement with the town as required under section 9.3.311, the zoning bylaws. The M O A, which covers the uses not permitted under the industrial zone on the property, defined the N B O D proposal regarding the 2007 concept plan, financial considerations the developer was agreeing to, and a series of mitigation issues the developer was going to undertake or pay for as part of the proposed project. A summary of the M O A called for development of up to 175,000 of retail space, development of up to 100 housing units. In exchange for the ability to build these non-allowed uses in the industrial zone, the developer agreed to make a financial gift to the town of 100 developer agreed to make a financial gift to the town of $1 million, of which 50% was allocated to the retail portion of the NBOD proposal and 50% allocated to the residential portion of the NBOD proposal. The developer also agreed to a series of front door traffic improvements, improvements on Route 11727 intersection, along with five other intersection improvements, as well as 260,000 in funds to the town, who was in turn gonna perform traffic work at three additional defined intersections, which are all defined in the, uh, MOA agreement. The MOA also called for 31,000 in funds for water and sewer improvements, as well as funds to pay for the town's third-party consultants. Uh, the second plan we up here, which is the second page, is the 2009 plan, which was approved by the, uh, planning board. So after receiving town meeting approval for the concept plan, the developer in 2009 submitted the plans to the planning board, calling for site plan approval of approximately 173,970 square feet of retail development to be located in nine new buildings on the north side of the project adjacent to Field Street. The developer did not seek planning board site plan approval for the 100 residential units as part of this planning board filing. The site plan was approved by the planning board but was appealed, and finally in 2012, the site plan received final approval. Unfortunately, by this time, the project that was originally conceived in 2006 was no longer feasible due to major shifts in the retail sector as far as project configuration and the co-tenancy requirements of major retailers before they will agree to build new stores in non-core locations, which this is one of those locations. For example, even though a major regional grocer had originally signed a lease to build a new store at 129 Parker Street, they were no longer willing to build that store unless significant co-tenancy milestones were reached. And even there, are still concerned with the location, given the significant grocer expansion that has occurred east, north, and west of the site by market basket and to a lesser extent, regional expansions into the area by Wegmans. In May 2013, now onto the third page of the handout, uh, Maynard Special Town Meeting rejected the proposed NBOD amendments proposed by Capital Group Properties based on a concept plan that would have resulted in a project build-out of 328,000 square feet of retail space, redevelopment of the 50,300-square-foot PK2 building, and 250 apartments for a total project size of 7,000, 703,300 square feet. Approximately six months after the special town meeting, the board of selectmen formed the 129 Parker Street Ad Hoc Committee. After approximately four months of meetings, the committee issued its report based on a concept plan, which is the current plan that's up on the stand, which included up to 250,000 feet of retail space, 17,000 square feet of medical space, 110,000 square feet assisted or independent living, senior living facility, and up to 250 apartments. There was not committee agreement on the exact number of apartments, but a range of 150 to 250, um, were some of the suggestions that came out of the committee, for a total project build-out of 702,000 square feet. Just, uh, stay on that plan for a minute, the old plan, exactly the committee plan. I think generally with this plan here, there was agreement on sort of the types of uses of the property. I don't think there was consensus among the neighborhoods as far as where the buildings were located. Uh, in particular, the retail buildings to the south side of the property that abutted Voe's Hill, I think there was a lot of concern that the backs of those buildings were fairly close to the property line and we'd be having trucks and deliveries in that area, which were fairly close to the houses. Um, that was probably the main reason we decided not to move forward with this plan. We just thought that there was a lot of design issues that, that, um, needed to be worked out. On this plan here, it called for the residential portion, all the residential to be on the north side and all the retail commercial to be on the south side of the property. Okay, the next one. So that brings us to today. So over the last year, since the committee got over, we've been looking how we could redesign the site, with sort of the general intent of the uses and the sizes that came out of the committee, but to work on more of the design issues, um, number one, dealing with the neighborhoods and the location of the buildings and minimizing the impact of the neighborhoods, you know, on the project, of the project and the neighborhoods. So this current plan here, um, is very similar programmatically to the 2014 ad hoc committee plan. It includes 241,050 square feet of retail space, um, 53,700 of commercial medical office space, 142-unit, um, 142-suite senior independent living facility, and that's sort of the dark blue building, uh, no, uh, located sort of on the west side of the property, um, on that there. And then 200 units of housing, which are the three green buildings located right behind the, uh, proposed supermarket. So on the, um, south side of the property, you have the supermarket, another, uh, you know, potential 23,000-foot building. Behind that, we've got the 200-unit, uh, residential apartment proposal, and then next to that is the 142-unit, uh, senior living facility, uh, the sort of the end of the cul-de-sac there. Um, on the north side of the property, it's basically the 200, 2009 plan, uh, that was approved by the planning board, and then some future use in the PK2 building, uh, which could be medical, educational, fitness, uh, could be a number of, uh, different uses As far as the 200-unit residential project, it's being proposed as, uh, an affordable housing project, so 25% of the units would be affordable. Um, the proposed configuration would be 96 one-bedroom units, 84 two-bedroom units, um, and 23-bedroom units, for a total bedroom count of, uh, 327 bedrooms. The total proposed project size is 667,750 square feet, which is 5% smaller in total square footage than the, uh, 2014 ad hoc committee plan. This proposed project includes public gathering areas, which includes gazebo overlooking several ponds, trellis seating areas, and a bus stop towards the front of the project along Parker Street. Uh, proposed uses in the project would include a supermarket, several restaurants, clothing stores, pet store, hardware store, fitness facility, urgent medical care, general medical care, possible educational uses, and personal service establishments, to name a few. Um, as part of this proposal, we'd also be, um, completing all the mitigation agreed to in the memorandum agreement and any additional mitigation that, you know, we agreed to with the town going forward, uh, based on the, uh, new project design. Right now, we're very close to, to be in a position to sign a lease with a supermarket who would be taking the 65,000 square feet on the south side of the property. Um, so that would be the maximum size it would take. The final size is still working out as the configuration. Uh, assuming that they came to the project, we have, uh, several retailers interested in leasing space on the north side of the property, um, including restaurants, um, fitness, uh, hardware, pet stores, and other general retail purposes. Again, the last handout that I gave you sort of compares the various plans, the 2009 plan that was approved by the planning board, that had the, um, 758,000 of total square footage, the 2013 proposal that we made that, uh, was rejected at the special town meeting, which was 703,300 square feet, the 2014, um, ad hoc committee plan, which had a total potential build-out of 702,000 square feet, and then the 2015, this plan here, which has a total square footage of, uh, 667,750 square feet.
I missed the number of three-bedroom units.
Uh, oh, 20.
20.
Yeah, that's, 'cause that's, um, the state sort of mandates that you need 10% three-bedroom units.
Hmm. Uh, just another clarifying question, the, the two-bedroom units, would they be two-bedroom plus den, or just straight two-bedroom?
Um, I don't think the design has actually, you know, been that much. Mo, the majority would be two-bedroom. Um, given the fact that they're doing three-bedroom units, uh, they may not do the two-bedroom with den. Normally, there would be, there'd be two and two-bedrooms with den, but given the fact that you gotta do three-bedrooms, uh, they may not have those in this plan.
Just a couple other clarifying questions here. How many restaurants do you think on the high end?
Um, I mean, right now, I think by zoning, you can only do three. Um, we'd probably like to do one or two more than that, but right now, we just have three slated, 'cause that's all we can really do.
That leaves my next question of, uh, how many liquor licenses do you think?
I'd say maybe three. I really can't see us putting more than three.
Three pouring licenses and?
Yes.
And a package license? Anything else you have to, uh, you think would be helpful for our, uh, further consideration?
I think that's it right now.
Okay. Anybody else on the board got any, uh, clarifying questions, like, you missed the number of three-bedrooms like I did?
About that.
You got that, alright, good for you. Alright, Kevin, you got any, uh?
I don't.
Questions? Alright. So at this point, I think this is good. I think we have something to work with. Kevin, do you think we have enough information to, if we were to get a consultant who could do a financial analysis, do you think we'd have enough for him?
Yeah, um, certainly. I'm waiting to hear back from, uh, attorney Witten on that as well. I did kind of, um, reach the subject slightly with, uh, the potential, if we were to go down that road, with, uh, Mr. De Petri and their willingness to help with, uh, any data that, that a consultant would need. And certainly, anything else that we would need, uh, be willing to provide that detail as well. Inevitably, there's gonna be some additional information that's gonna be needed.
Gotcha. Um, so, question to the board, what do you think about, um, hiring some, uh, development agreement expert who can give us some, uh, financial analysis about, about this latest version? Any thoughts on that? Would that be useful for our?
Yes.
Later decisions?
Yes, I think it would be useful.
Yep.
Logical.
Alright, that's good. Well, in that case, I'll, um, I'll make a motion that we direct Kevin to, uh, engage a, uh, a consultant for an economic analysis of the, of the, uh, plan as proposed, um, using, uh, somebody recommended by our special counsel. Do we have a second on the motion?
Second.
Your motion and a second, any further discussion on that motion? All in favor? Alright, motion passes 5-0. Um, let's see. I don't know how long that'll take, Kevin, hopefully not that long. I'm just trying to figure out when we might be able to bring this issue back for, uh, a more thorough discussion at a, at a board meeting.
Um, first meeting in May?
Certainly. Any chances of a second meeting in April?
Don't.
We have to hire the person first.
Yeah, and, uh...
To identify the individual. They may not be available, that's right.
I mean, we can certainly shoot for that, but I don't, I don't know if it's realistic that, before our May meeting, that...
Okay. Alright, well, let's shoot for that and, at that meeting, we'll have to decide what our next steps will be. I mean, at this point, I don't think it's really necessary for staff to do legwork in trying to write new zoning bylaws or anything. I mean, they gotta decide whether we're gonna do, um, something big or something small or nothing at all at the, the May one, but...
So does the, the board wish to, uh, define the scope of their analysis as far as, uh, impacts, just the, uh, the major, um, you know, utilities, education? So is there anything beyond that, or we look to, uh, the consultant?
Can we, uh, perhaps engage the person first? Have that person come and speak to us about what they recommend that we might wanna look at, rather than us, who aren't experts at these things, making those types of determinations? I'd rather hear from the expert, have them tell us what they think is necessary for us to make a learned decision.
Sure. So at least May.
Alright, well, it won't be later than, it won't be later than that, May one. Won't be later than that. Okay.
Well, does the board feel differently about that, you know, suggestion?
No, I agree. I mean, I can think of, you know, I would like to see, um, a, uh, a water, um, bill analysis, 'cause I have a feeling my water bill will like this. But, that's okay. But, alright, we'll, we'll work and streamline that effort as quickly as we can. But, uh, first meeting in May is what?
May 6th.
May 6th, alright.
Wednesday.
Is it Wednesday?
Yeah, election is May 5th.
Oh, it is, isn't it?
Be an extra day.
Okay.
Might throw off my whole schedule.
Yeah. May 6th it is. It's gonna rain that day anyway. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Never rains anything off, but you guys should smile more. You guys don't smile enough. Just saying. Smile.
We're saving our smiles for...
Till May? Till you're in May, you better smile in May. It's not gonna rain on May 6th either, I guarantee it.
I'll remember that, Mr. De Petri.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's interesting.
May 6th is a Wednesday. I write that one down.
Why are we meeting on Wednesday instead of Monday?
Simple tomorrow is election day.
You can still change it.
Alright, so Kevin, next up on the agenda, oh good, you spelled it out, Central Middlesex Emergency Response Association Rate Increase Proposal, CIMA.
Yes, um, so CIMA is the, uh, the association, if you will, that, um, Maynard has been involved with, that provides our, um, ALS, Advanced Life Support, um, services and billing services for town of Maynard and, um, several other communities that belong to the CIMA group. Um, Maynard, uh, formed with them during its initial inception in 2010, uh, has been a member, um, with them for, since, since that time. The CIMA board has, uh, initiated a couple of meetings, uh, over the last couple of months to discuss, um, ProEMS, who is the, uh, the provider, um, to CIMA, uh, the, um, the need of justification for a rate increase, um, specifically for the ALS services that they provide, um, and I'll speak to how that helps on the BLS side. You have before you a brief, quick, uh, sort of justification for raising the billing rates that was in the actual packet. In addition to that, you have a brief presentation that was provided, um, to the group I mentioned, um, where we had come back, the group as a whole had come back to them and requested some additional information with regards to further analysis to justify the rate increase request. Um, and that's what you have, um, has a separate PDF document in Dropbox, which basically provides out the, uh, revenue analysis and where their expenses are going, um, to justify the rate increase. The group as a whole voted to, uh, approve the, uh, 10% rate increase and, um, it... The group as a whole voted to approve the ten percent rate increase, and it, at this point, requires that every one of those communities bring it back to their boards and councils, respectively, for their final approval and vote. Chief Stowers is here this evening, could answer some of the specific operational questions if, if the board has any of that. Again, the rate increase for Pro-EMS would be to the insurance providers, et cetera, with regards to the ALS, the Advanced Life Support, but that also would result in Maynard's BLS, Basic Life Support Ambulance Service, also receiving ten percent rate increase, which will inevitably help our, our ambulance billing as a whole, anticipating somewhere around twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars annually that would help increase our ambulance receipts with such an increase. So, I mentioned it briefly at our last meeting in the TA report, that this would be coming and certainly entertain any questions. I don't know if Chief Stowers wants to.
I have a quick question, Kevin. Can you just tell me what the current ALS rate is and what the proposed rate change is? Because I don't know if I grabbed that.
Yeah, they were supposed to provide that, Chief, did you get that?
I, I think it's, I think it's around fourteen hundred dollars.
The current rate?
Current rate.
And do you know what the proposed rate is?
Ten percent above that, so fifteen forty, roughly. Don't, don't quote me on exactly the numbers, I'll get them for you if you'd like, but.
Yeah, that was, David, that was one of the questions that the group had asked them to provide, was the current rate, but it, there has not been a rate increase since we signed on initially.
I realize that, yeah.
And then, part of what the discussion was too, is that that's a good idea, that we should be doing this analysis, certainly beyond, you know, sooner than five years, so that we're not moving into a position where they're coming back to communities looking for ten percent increase. You know, it should be reviewed on an annual basis or something like that. So the, the group recognized that as a, as a fault, but there was never any provisions that were written into the contract to do that.
Chief, has any of the communities dropped out ever since we started with CEMERA six years ago?
A couple of them have dropped out, or partially dropped out, but that's because they provide their own ALS service. It's not because of the issues they've had with the, the group providing it. It's something that they wanted to do on their own. That's in fact, one of the goals that we have on the Fire Department too, is eventually to provide our own ALS service, but nobody's left the group because of the group. And in fact, they've actually picked up a couple people since then.
Kevin, what's the specific motion that we're being asked?
It would be the motion to approve the, I guess, the CEMERA request to accept the rate increase of ten percent.
Do we have their request? I don't see anything that has their request.
No, I'm bringing it before you now. We already voted as a group to, to increase it. It has to come back before the board of selectmen. I'm bringing it before the board, there's no official, I'm making the official request.
CEMERA themselves have already approved it, the group. But, the board has to approve what CEMERA approved to continue on. Got that, but I think.
What did CEMERA approve?
That's the question.
Ten percent rate increase.
Every rate there is?
Yeah.
The specific rate?
Ten percent rate increase on their bill, on their billable ALS rates.
Yeah, and BLS.
Yeah, and BLS.
As well as BLS.
But, for that purpose, it's, they do our billing for, for Basic Life Support, but the revenue comes to the town. ALS, they do the billing, the revenue goes to Pro-EMS.
Since we joined, did, have they increased the number of, lack of better phrase, trolling ambulances? Because I understand that an ALS unit trolls the area and waits for there to be a call and then respond on.
Yeah, what they do is they have two Ford Explorers, and they have, they keep one usually right around Acton, and the other one is over in the Lincoln area. So, they haven't increased that on a daily basis, but what they do is if they're expecting, you know, like during the storm season, they actually put three on. But they haven't increased the number of staff, no, they haven't.
Your knowledge, has there ever been a concern, from Maynard's perspective, has there ever been a concern regarding the ALS response from CEMERA?
There's been, there has been quite a few times in the past few years where they haven't been available. That has been a concern. That's one of the reasons that, long-term, we're looking to.
Yeah.
Develop our own. It doesn't happen very often, but it does happen.
I guess you just hope it's not you that.
Well, I mean, one of the things that we are fortunate of here is that we are close to the hospitals, so.
Right.
You know, that, that does help us. It's not like we're, you know, way out in a remote part of Stowe or something like that, but, yeah, that's a concern.
Any other questions from the board? Alright, I'll make a motion that we, we approve CEMERA's recommendation for a ten percent increase on ALS and BLS rates. Effective when? Would that be, Kevin?
It would be July 1.
Effective July 1.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Alright, next up is some warrant articles. We have one from the Community Preservation Committee, you think?
Yes, you have one from CPC, which is the Preservation, CPC Fund Reserve Appropriation Article, that is sponsored by the Community Preservation Committee.
Alright, in the amount of three hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars.
Correct.
Alright, so, and this is for the annual or special? Special?
Special.
Alright, so I'll make a motion that we accept Control M, the Community Preservation Fund Reserve Appropriation, sponsored by the Community Preservation Committee, in the amount of three hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, for the special town meeting in May. Do we have a second?
I'll second it. Kevin, that's all been, language has been approved, and we're all set to go with that? Language is okay with council?
Yes, she said, she's looked at, at this one though. Yeah. Again, just.
Is that true for all the ones we'll be talking about tonight? Just so I don't have to ask the same question?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there's two for this evening. Again, these, which you've seen, some of the language changed, that we started, I believe, in, was it fourteen? Was with regards to turning back unexpended funds back to the funding sources. That's been one thing that they've continued with this appropriation for this year as well. So if the money, if there's any money unspent, it'll be returned back to its funding source. That's been spelled out, where in years past, it hasn't.
I'm just curious, what's the definition of unexpended?
Projects over.
Like obligated versus actually the checks written?
Yeah, I mean, they don't, they don't do a purchase order encumber, but if the project, they're not anticipating any additional funds to be used. We can, some of the projects we have are just encumbered, we've gotten, the problem is some of these don't have definitive defined quotes or estimates, I mean, they have somewhat, it might be, Taylor, once they have that definitive contract or estimate, then that can, that set amount can be encumbered, and then the balance of that would return back.
Do we know if there are previous CPA allocations that have not been returned back for one reason or another? Sort of out of the scope of this particular discussion?
Some that have, that will close, that will close out in June of this year.
And we'll take them back?
Yeah, one of those.
Even though it wasn't in the article or whatever at the time?
Yeah, it was in for that one. Last year was the first year we had done that.
Okay.
This is the second year. They will be working on a warrant article at some point in time for another meeting.
One that specifically comes to mind is the Veteran Housing Study. There's unexpended funds there, and that project has finished.
Yep.
Somewhere around, I don't know, seven or eight thousand, that money would then get turned back to the funding source.
Okay.
Alright, so we have a motion to accept the, the article for the special town meeting. All in favor? Okay, vote five zero to accept the article. Now, the next proposed one is from us, whether we want to sponsor an article to transfer of the Coolidge School to the Board of Selectmen. So, it would be the transfer of the school and the grounds, including the playground, I believe.
Correct.
From the school committee to the Board of Selectmen, for general municipal purposes. Okay?
You suggested that as if there's a choice. You said, if we want to.
Well, I mean, it's our article.
I understand, but.
Yeah, I mean, it's a.
Practically.
The school committee doesn't want it.
The school committee has, has written to us saying that they are not going to.
They've abandoned it.
Yes, so.
And, that's fine. Okay. So, this is special as well?
Control V, special, yes.
So I'll make a motion to approve and put forth Control V, the transfer of Coolidge School to the Board of Selectmen, as an article for the special town meeting in May. Do we have a second?
Second. Do you want that?
Sure.
Alright, motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor? Five zero. Careful what you ask for.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
May I ask a question for clarification on that article?
Yep.
The school committee wishes to turn over the property to the Board of, control of the Board of Selectmen, who presently controls the recently finished playground on the lower level. I think you've got some legal things there that need to be, you know, addressed.
Alright, we'll look into that. I mean, on paper, the school committee currently does, and just asks for us to do it, but we'll take a look, thank you. Another control thing, and we sort of might have done this last meeting, but just to do it clean, I want to do a motion to withdraw Control M from the special town meeting, that being the bylaw amendment for CBA zoning to allow a brewery. Do we have a second on that motion?
Yeah, a second.
Motion and a second. And, as Kevin will tell us in a little bit, the brewery has decided to go into the mill building, so they don't need this article to enable them to seek a site in the central business district. Any further discussion? All in favor? Alright. Through Control M. What other articles are we going to be seeing, Kevin?
The water sewer budget, general fund budget. I anticipate a zoning article from Planning Board for 129 Acton Street.
Oh, yeah.
And free cash appropriation article and overlay.
Are those special, or is that free cash allocation, is that special?
Special.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the bylaw would be in the special as well. And then the three budgets articles, one for water, one for water, one for sewer, and then one for the general fund, would all be in the annual.
Okay.
Those will all be finalized and ready for March 31st.
Our special meeting on March 31st, okay. That's fine. And what's the deadline for citizen petitions? Do you happen to have that? It's forty-five and thirty days, so.
Yeah. I don't recall the time.
Haven't quite done the math yet.
It's forty-five back from the nineteenth.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, yeah.
Okay, and then thirty back from the eighteenth.
And then the special, yeah, I think it's April 3rd.
Okay. Alright. Anything else on the warrant articles? Kevin?
That's it.
That's it? Alright, agenda item number ten. FY16 Budget Update. I just happened to notice that the House is going to be having public hearings about their potential budget all the way through April 13th, so.
Yeah.
It won't make our printing.
The final, no. But I have provided a, an update, where I think we will be as far as available revenue and expenditures, which you should have in Dropbox. Essentially, after looking at the governor's local aid estimates, where we're at, and particularly with regards to chapter seventy money, feel that those numbers will not change and will be in good shape. The ones that have concerns about, which we've leveled, is the unrestricted general, and then some of the cherry sheet offsets, so we've kind of taken half of the cherry sheet assessments, because we're not going to know what, or, we're not going to know what some of those are going to come in at, you know, for a while. So I think what you have before you shows what I think is a, is a, is a good number to utilize. I mean, we talked about it before, but we went back through and did a more detailed analysis on the chapters, chapter seventy money, and looking at the FY16 and FY15 foundation budget, doing the calculations, that FY16 budget increased by, foundation budget increased by two hundred and twenty-one thousand, one sixty-five, and then from fourteen to fifteen, it increased one fifty-six, two ninety-eight. And the, the single reason for the FY16 jump is that the ELL student population had increased from twenty-nine in FY15 to forty-one in FY16, and the EL, that by itself resulted in the ELL foundation budget increase of one hundred and twenty-one thousand from FY15 to sixteen. Additionally, there was an increase of free and reduced income students, so I think twenty, of, I think, twenty-seven, which resulted in eighty-four thousand dollars in FY16 foundation funding. And, so I think the governor's chapter seventy aid, based on the DOE Foundation Budget Formula, is consistent with the past, and, you know, consistent with the past, hasn't been, ever been cut. And I think those numbers are going to be good. So I've redone the, what you have before you, which shows now, after making the adjustments, local aid of the two fifty-seven, oh five seven, and making the adjustments with increased expenditures that weren't anticipated, one of those biggest ones being the nine point nine eight percent increase to health insurance costs, factoring in the reduction in anticipated asset costs, leaving us with that budget to the positive, or net surplus, if you will, of that one eighty-two number. I thought I printed it out.
One eighty-five, seven, six?
One eighty-five, yeah. Which I think, at this point, is, is a good number for available revenue, for the board to make some decisions with.
Oh, good, it'll be a fun meeting then.
Kevin, you're capturing the, the health insurance increase under benefits that, on this sheet?
Correct, yes, correct. It's listed under benefits as the cost center, but the detailed out, breaks out Medicaid, the pension, health benefits.
But on this sheet we're looking at tonight, it's captured under.
Correct, yes. As I said, the health benefits overall from last year increased nine point nine eight percent, but if you look at the overall, on the detail, it only went up a little bit over two, because of the, the savings that we were able to work through the Medex Savings Program earlier this year, which helped lessen that impact drastically.
And this sheet we're looking at with the revenue estimates, the reference to the 2015 budget original, that's not what was at the budget meeting, right? That was probably like version twelve or something.
Correct, yes, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we're on, well, on that I don't think we're that high. I think on the summary, we're on revision twenty, so.
Okay.
But yeah, it is.
Anything else on the budget?
No, like I said, other than, you know, we're going to finalize the budget article, and, you know, at this point, look to the Board to, if there's any areas to adjust with that available surplus to consider looking at.
Alright, well, so we got the whole night of March 31st dedicated to this. Very good. We'll figure it out. Okay.
Any questions? I have, to that point, Dave, you're looking at the summary. I've also provided the full detail soft write budget, which has the entire general fund budget line item, line item by line item.
Is that in Dropbox?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a PDF document that has by department, and then the line items within the department for the general.
Is it under, not under this meeting, but under general?
I think it's by itself is a PDF document that says TA, TA recommended budget, but if you have more specific questions with regards to, you know, the actual healthcare, health insurance cost number, or pension, or any of those, still all be in.
Alright, and you promised not to change any of those numbers between now and March 31st?
No, those are good.
Okay, alright.
Done. The biggest variable, like I said, was the, you know, the health insurance number, which wasn't what I wanted to hear, but on the flip side, the finalization on the ASABIT number was good. For those that are interested, ASABIT's going to be presenting their FY16 budget to the Finance Committee on Monday, this coming Monday, the 23rd. So I will be there.
Okay. You'll be there?
I'll be there.
Representing us?
Representing everyone, representing the town.
He wants to go to ASABIT.
Did you do it there? Or they do it here? No, no, they're coming to our Finance Committee. I think DPW and General Government are also going to present their budgets, the same in the evening, after ASABIT.
No wonder you're gonna be there.
Yeah. I'll be there.
They're gonna take away our stipend, huh? Okay.
Yes.
Alright.
One more thing.
Item eleven, economic development updates. Something about brewery?
Yeah, that's the big topic. I don't have a whole lot to share beyond that. As you know, the brewery, the chairman attended the proposed Planning Board hearing for the brewery, this, they pulled the article for that and it was approved this evening. We got word from the folks from Whole House Group that they've signed a letter of intent with Saracen Properties to locate at Clock Tower Place, Building Five. They've released a full press release through Battle Road Brewing Company. They've also, I think over the weekend or Friday, did a press release within the Boston Business Journal, which is a big, a big deal, that certainly provided, provided, that one provided a snapshot of current condition view of Building Five and the mill building, and certainly will get a lot of exposure. Looking forward to working with them as they move forward in the planning stages, in planning and design stages of that building. I think my discussions with them, it looks like they're looking at taking the mezzanine level of Building Five, which is essentially when you walk into the entrance of Building Five, they're looking at occupying that entire mezzanine bottom, as well as the second floor as more dining room seating, first floor being a bar, the actual tanks for the brewery, and some high tops, and then adding office space at the third floor within the same sort of mezzanine level. So they, the other nice piece about that is Whole House Group did decide to locate their offices, is about five or six full-time employees when they will be fully up, that will be there. The initial discussion with them was they were going to locate their offices at another entity that they're doing in Walfam, but they have decided to keep that alley here in Maynard. That will be right in that, in that building for Whole House Group and Battle Road Brewing Company.
Kevin, just for clarification purposes for people who are wondering, Building Five for, if you stand at St. Bridget's Parish and look across the big parking lot.
Correct.
And you see the flag with the glass.
Yes.
That's basically the spot where this brewery is.
Exactly, yep. Right through that glass entryway is the mezzanine that I was referencing.
Yep, okay.
And then, yeah.
I think people don't necessarily know.
Building Five essentially was a building that Monster vacated and spaced there, so it'll be, be a nice setting for a brewery with the post and beam woodworking, and I think, I think the owners have a good vision of, you know, what, what they'd like to see there for a brewery and pub, so.
Saracen gonna come in to us?
Uh, no.
Weren't they planning on coming in here?
Yeah, they're, they're not going to until later, a little bit later. Still working out some legal issues, and they won't be doing anything publicly until after that, which is.
Right, right.
So I would anticipate certainly, you know, after April one, if, you know, if the Board wanted to have them in, they'd be more than willing. To that point, I know Chris was, Jason was able to attend the Clock Tower Place meeting with Saracen that Cambridge Focus had, had hosted, and it was a good opportunity to hear and meet a few of the players, the leadership team with Saracen Properties. Travis Powell was a principal with, with Saracen, spoke a little bit about the current situation and what their plans were to some degree. Still sort of dancing around the legal issue with the March 26th piece, but I think they did a good job, you know, he did a good job providing an update as much as he could, and folks seemed to be pretty receptive to that, and a lot of energy and excitement too, you know, with, with the new group. I've talked to several tenants that are just ecstatic that they're there, and, you know, they've, already have sort of turned the ship the right way, if you will, and, you know, folks that were planning on leaving as soon as their leases end, et cetera, now are willing to stay. So I think certainly those, those are huge wins for us, and, you know, they haven't lost anybody as of yet.
What, do they have a date for the brewery, a proposed date or a suggested?
They're looking, they're still looking at taking the whole summer with an opening of in the fall of '15, but, you know, at this point, they're able to move forward with a plan and permits and things like that.
So they don't need anything but just like standard building and park permits or anything else, it's just good to go?
Yeah, they'll need, they'll need that liquor license piece is still another key piece that they're gonna be looking for.
There's a health licenses, probably.
Yeah, yeah.
But there's no, there's no zoning or any of those type of things you have to go through.
Right. Okay, yeah, there's no special permit required because they're going into the mill, so, you know, there's no zoning change issues that are required.
Okay.
The only piece that, obviously, if they look to what they're proposing, it's, I don't know what, the details of, but they are talking about an outdoor beer garden, something like that would, would spark probably having to come back for approvals, but as far as the brewery operation, it should be in good shape.
I imagine it would be that in the spring, following spring?
Yeah, the beer garden probably would be slated after they get in there and operational, but I think that's more auxiliary to the, you know, to the major piece, and I think they have some ideas of that, but they didn't even spend much detail on it. I just think they, I think they, they as a whole, as does Saracen, see a lot of value in the mill pond, in utilizing the mill pond in every, as an asset with, with the, the whole mill as a whole, as well as to this proposed business, so should be good. Any other questions? The, at 129 Acton Street, received the Planning Board approval, subject to execution of a development agreement, and the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, MAPC, is discussing the scope of the housing production plan at its Planning Board meeting on March 24th, and.
Are those two separate from 129 Park?
Yeah, yeah.
So MAPC is a separate issue than 129 Park?
Correct. That was the Metropolitan Area Planning Council.
129 Acton, yeah, we gotta change one of those names.
Yeah, the two 129s are getting a little bit confusing.
So.
Park or Acton?
We're not naming anything else in town, 129, no more. It's banished. That's it on economic development at this point. Alright.
Yeah, before, one question, because Dave just, David just mentioned it. The liquor store, that thing came back, what does that mean?
Oh, yeah.
It was in the consent, but what does that mean?
I'm just providing information back to you. There's no action on the Board's behalf, I just want you to be aware. It came back because their legal counsel had missed a bunch of information that they were required to.
So does this, they have to?
Yeah, they have to refill out things.
Resubmit their application for licenses?
Resubmit it back through the ABCC.
Okay. So what happens in the meantime? Is the place closed?
Um, no, no, it just hasn't transferred.
Still under the previous owner?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, until the ABCC approval.
Thank you.
I think that was another 129, wasn't it?
Yeah, that's 129, that's 129 Main Street.
I said, I said it could have been 125.
129 Main, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Definitely banning that number.
That was a paperwork issue.
It was in the discussion, actually.
They had done.
Yeah.
More than once. Hopefully, they'll get it right on the third try, because we had it right on one thing, they had it wrong on the application, and, you know. TA report, we're, the OPAP analysis is underway, we're anticipating a report, that's the other post-employment benefit analysis that we do on a biannual basis, required under GASB. There, we're anticipating a report hopefully by around May 1st. Couple of things we did notice, differences in the reports that were issued from '08, 2010, 12, and we're working with the consultant to sort of standardize the information, to get it to align with sort of pension reporting. So that'll be cleaned up, and we'll have, we'll have that actuarial data, et cetera, that'll put you right to sleep, but for May, May 1. The last one, we, we was engaging with the same consultant that did the last one, which was USI, out of Connecticut, one of the big actuarial firms. To that three-year audit of the golf course, at the end of the, we're at the end of the three years there, the financial records, that started on March 16th, and we should have that audit report shortly as well. And then the final review of the new contract is going to, for legal review this week and some further discussions. That should be back to the Board probably in early, early, I guess, for meeting with her on the 23rd, a meeting in April. I'll work with, I'll work with Bill to determine what meeting makes the most sense. I know our next meeting is pretty, pretty packed for our first meeting in April, so in the near future, we'll, we'll see that back. The Council on Aging Director is back half-time this week and anticipating, she'll be back full-time next week, so she was out on a related injury, fall that she had taken, but she is back and doing well. She's only allowed to come back half-time this week, but will be, we anticipate full-time return for next week. Eighty residents showed up for the St. Patrick's Day lunch that they held on the 13th of March. It was a good turnout and some good engagement and conversation with folks. A couple of things that they're doing as far as classes, they're starting this month, Zumba class, yoga, bridge club, in a balance class, all will be starting this month, and continuing to move forward and expanding on programs and, and services with, at the Council on Aging. The initial facility manager, facilities manager interviews will be completed tomorrow. We're hoping to have finalists available for final interviews, potentially as early as next week. Hopefully, all will move well there, and we'll be getting closer to hiring a facilities manager. The Maynard Business Alliance, MBA, is conducting, as mentioned in the past, is conducting a downtown parking survey to write input from all the downtown businesses. The town is working with them and coordinating municipal responses that have been requested. We've looked at the first initial draft, et cetera, so that is moving forward on that parking survey. And a couple of just quick customer service related kudos. Sandra Baltazar, who's the Treasury Clerk Assistant in the Treasury Collector's Office, is doing an outstanding job. She's received several thanks, a couple of small thank you gifts from folks that have, she's gone above and beyond to help, and her supervisor has noted a number of people, supervisor is Cheryl Keane, who's a Treasury Collector, has noted a number of people thanking her for the positive effort she puts forth, and if the Board or any of the residents have had an opportunity to, to go by the Treasury Collector's Office, I think that they'll be pleased with, hopefully.
Can you say her name again?
Sandra Baltazar. So she's worked, she's working out exceptionally well, and has really fit in well with the town, fit well in the office, and has been a breath of fresh air to residents and businesses that are doing business at the counter there. So as, as a couple of other areas, you know, we've continued to work on, DPW has received some handwritten notes thanking them for the work on the snow removals, some emails, continue to improve there. And we're planning on trying to utilize an opportunity for a off-selectment meeting in Tuesday, in May, potentially the second or fourth Tuesday evening in May, potentially looking to close at 4:00 PM and, and do a customer service focused training and some other professional development related trainings to that effect, but certainly, you know, we're working right now with a consultant to be able to do that, and as soon as, in the near future, identify and lock that in so that we can get that information advertised out to the public as soon as possible. Looking at the, an opportunity where we can capture all of the employees that are, you know, as opposed to closing early on a Friday, et cetera, everybody will be here on a Tuesday evening, and hopefully we'll give enough notice that it won't really have a drastic impact on folks that are looking to do business at Town Hall, so we're shooting for May for that. That's all I have. All good.
The Chair Report, first thing is, I'd like to remind everybody that at the April 7 meeting, State Senator Eldridge and State Rep Hogan will be there, and we should probably be prepared with any requests or insights we want to provide to them. So, something to think about over the next couple of weeks. Maybe we can carve out a couple of minutes on our March 31st meeting, just to, if there's any initiative or something you want to talk to them about, let's be sure that we get it down and have it ready for them. Kevin, related to Kate, maybe the, what's the deal with the civil service issue? I had to sign some old document and?
Oh, that, they.
Kate's trying to get it through.
Yeah, they didn't need that document, that, they actually were able to get them to accept the copy of the signature documents. But that's, yeah, it's filed with, at the State House with legis, they thought they were gonna have to get new signatures or recreate it, which, you know, ended up being okay. They, the scanned copy we had is actually, was a colored copy, but it wasn't, you could tell it wasn't original signatures. They misplaced the original signature one, but, so they, they ended up being okay with the copied version, with the actual attested original of the town meeting vote, so that was sort of a, a little bit of a fire drill. They didn't need that document.
Ah, okay.
Was there anything about the request to the legislature getting to Kate? Was there anything about the request to the legislature getting to Kate late?
Was there anything?
Yeah. Was, was there an issue with Maynard failing to send something through to the legislature and therefore Kate didn't get it till late?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that was the piece that had sort of...
My understanding is that the process hadn't even started at the legislature until just maybe last week.
Until she got it, correct.
So, the question then becomes, first off, how did that happen? And secondly, is that, does that jeopardize the issue that we have hired police officers under civil ser-, under, outside of civil service, and it hasn't been approved as it's properly supposed to have been?
Right. Yeah, we're, 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 we're working with Labor Council and Town Council with regards to that. We don't have an answer yet, working with the Civil Service Commission. We became aware of it through the Civil Service Commission because of a bypass of a candidate that was from a long time ago. That was bypassed, there was a civil service candidate. We became aware of it, that they didn't actually have it at the legislature from the Civil Service Commission because of that process. That's when we started to dig around and realized that it wasn't actually filed.
Think that's an issue the board should have heard about?
What's that?
This board? The fact that...
Just happened last week.
The fact that there was an issue?
Yeah, it just came up.
The original was sent to the, to the State House. In June. We had done what we thought we had to do ten days ago, whatever. We found out it never got through Kate's office.
Okay, and who's responsible, Kevin, who's responsible to follow up with, with the process to make sure it's gone through? Is that the chief? Is that you? Is that...
I was the one who sent it.
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, at that point, you know, I mean, this is, this is all new. I mean, we've never, we've never done this, right?
I'm not really following this conversation. This is a lost-in-the-mail conversation? Is that what we're talking about?
On the final, yeah.
So, what happened? It's only one of us knows about it, and it's not, you know, David's the only one that knows about it. So, you know, we're playing, we're playing footsie across the room. What happened? Like, what are we talking about?
The last annual, annual town meeting approved the town getting out of civil service. The idea was that it's, it's voted out the way it's voted in. Town voted it out. There was a follow-up the town council had prepared to distribute to, which is a home rule petition, to distribute to the legislature. With the, that was some, that was sent in, in with those folks. And we real, we became aware that it didn't actually get received or filed until conversations with Civil Service Commission recently. So, we're now working out the, we've worked with Kate's office to, to get it filed. It's been filed with the, the State House Clerk and working with the head of the Civil Service Commission to address the issue.
Any, any type of exposure to the town, you know, legally or financially because of it, or anything like that?
No. The, the only potential, as discussed, was we were looking at the, at the hiring processes of concern, depending on how that played out. So, we're still, we're still trying to find out information on that piece.
Our belief is the effective date is the town meeting vote. But it could be the effective date is when the legislature submits it to R.H.D., the Civil Service Commission. So, that's, you know, there's a, there's a difference in timing there.
So, we'll find out, answer that question next time?
Hopefully, it doesn't harm potential candidates because the deadline to register was last week.
All right, I still don't quite understand, but I'll listen intently next time. Let's see here. Oh, just the status on the policy subcommittee. We had a meeting with Chris Okafor to go over cemetery regs. And we're hoping we're gonna have that pretty much recommendations for the board ready. At an April 14 meeting of the subcommittee, and then so it'll come before the board, early May, hopefully. At least the cemetery. And we're still working with him on watering sewer regs. And Chris has put together some ideas on naming policy that we'll probably discuss at our next meeting. So, we're plotting along.
When is the next meeting of the subcommittee?
Well, it's officially, it's the April 14, the only one we talked about. But actually, I was gonna ask you guys if you want to meet ahead of the March 31st meeting. Just forty-five minutes or an hour.
On the 31st?
Yep, that works.
On the, on the 31st?
On the 31st, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Since we're gonna be here anyways. Let's see here. Follow up on some old stuff. What's the status of the voter notification information? I'm gonna ask about various...
That should be done.
Versions and...
Yeah, that should be done. Let me find out. We, we can have that for the next meeting. Forgotten the information, should be also.
Okay, we just need, just print it out on paper saying, these guys do this and those guys do that.
Will do.
All right. And have you been able to get together the list of consultant and contracts?
Yes.
All right.
We can have that as well. I just, I'm just going back through it.
Okay.
It was kind of like a big dump, and I'm just gonna clean, I'm cleaning it up.
All right. I guess the O.P.A.B. guy is one of those.
We can have that ready as well.
I didn't even know there was such a person, but, okay.
Yep, they're on there.
And then, what's the status of the senior tax relief analysis?
That should be hearing back as well. That's with the...
They're meeting tonight, I think, I don't know.
Yeah, that's with, I didn't know. Did you see if that was on their agenda? I didn't, I didn't, it's with them. My last conversation with the assessor was that, that the board was gonna be discussing it, so...
Oh, good.
I'll find out the status of it.
Okay. And then, let's see, the only other stuff I have is just reporting on the planning board hearing. Most of you guys are here at the hearing anyways, but, yeah, they closed the hearing on the breweries. And for the 129 Acton proposal, I gave our, our comments during the hearing. Question for you, Kevin, when do you think their planning, their reports are gonna be ready? They say, uh, I don't know. They have to write, they have to write a zoning report or whatever.
Who's your report, the planning boards? Yeah, they make, they write their decision. I don't know when they... They'll meet next week. I would imagine it'd be ready by then.
All right. And then, the only weird thing about the meeting was somehow they had a development agreement that was purported to be from us. And we, of course, hadn't done any, done any development agreement. So, it was a little weird to see that in the hearing.
Yeah, we had created the template, if you will, for a development agreement to start the discussion of what the development agreement might, what might be in the development agreement. There wasn't any, there wasn't any negotiation or anything.
It just seemed a little improper for it to have our name on it. I was kind of expecting them just to have, these are their bullet points for what would be in it, you know? Like they do conditions. I didn't expect our name to be on it. It was a little confusing for people. And it seemed to have stuff that was not from the planning board. Stuff like, you know, welcome to Maynard signs and stuff. Where'd that come from?
Discussion with the developer that they had proposed.
That was in their original application.
So, since you're talking about that, the, I got something from Bill Nemser that I forwarded to the board. But 129 Acton, preparing final report for town meeting by planning board. B.O.S. to handle negotiations for development agreement with applicant for town meeting. That does it. Are they even gonna get us that report? And do we, and do we need that report prior to negotiating a development agreement?
Yeah, we should have their decision.
So, is the, is the goal to have that negotiated prior to this town meeting?
Yes.
Coming?
Prior to the...
And we wanna, we wanna try to have the discussion about that as soon as possible, but, Kevin, I mean, we're gonna have to figure out whether we can do it on the 7th or we have to wait till the 17th.
21st.
21st, sorry, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Sooner be better than later, but we'll have to figure that out. How do we do that sooner?
At least the first whack, I mean, to start talking about on the 17th with a meeting in May is a bit much.
I guess, I guess the question is, maybe from my standpoint, my viewpoint, we've kind of, like you say, kind of traded a template, you know, boilerplate stuff back and forth. When they come back or they go back and forth, is there a, I mean, is there a deep chasm? Is there a short leap? What's the, what's the difference? Do you see a big difference? You know, what, what can we expect to be looking at when we get to that point?
Yeah, I mean, as I said, we didn't negotiate the development agreement. And we provided stuff that Dave had kind of already provided back to us, put it in a document. You know, started to look at it as, with regards to form, you know, in legal form, to start the discussion. Originally had on the agenda a discussion of 129 Acton Street. For that purpose, for that the board could actually utilize that document as a, you know, as a sort of roadmap, if you will.
Kevin, was there any discussion between town council and the council for 129 develop, 129 Acton Streets developer on that document?
Only on the form, yeah, the form of the language of it, yeah. Like Lisa talked to their attorney.
Bill, Bill Nemser at that meeting said, "This is the result of some discussions between our council", suggesting that there had been some negotiation. And the developer sitting in the room, when he had it in his hand, seemed to suggest that this was like
Yeah, no.
negotiated document.
Right, that's not the case. They did talk with regards to the legal language in the document, in the form of the document. But no, there wasn't any, there wasn't a give-and-take back and forth. You'll provide this and, you know, et cetera.
Okay, well...
I'm a bit concerned that the affordable aspect wasn't included in that little four... You know, when you start having negotiation points and one of them is not on it, when you give them a preliminary, what clearly the developer believed was a preliminary negotiating point, it puts the town at harm when you've produced in a public meeting a record that does not include some of the aspects that the board specifically said at the previous meeting that we wanted to consider as part of a development agreement.
Yeah, that's been shared with them, but it wasn't, that wasn't formally the will of...
Well, it should have been, then it should have been on the list, is my, is my point.
Sure.
So that it wasn't...
Well, I think my point's the opposite, and my point is the board hadn't figured out what they wanted.
Well, that's true, too.
So, nothing should have been on the list.
But if there's gonna be a list, it should include everything that was discussed.
Yeah, it was clearly on the list of items that, that the chairman of the Board of Selectmen addressed with the planning board and the developer in the room. So, there's certainly no misunderstanding as to what, you know, some of us want or all of us want when it comes time to support or not support the document. And then, the fact that somebody else in the room stood up with a document that we have never seen, it doesn't put the harm at any, the town at any harm because we haven't seen it. The five of us are gonna agree to it. Who cares what he brought with them? That's his wish list. That's not our wish list.
It's just a little confusing for the developer, you know? Two different voices, but we'll work it out.
I would suggest he was the least confused person in the room. Because he brought, he brought the piece of paper. That's his, that's his wish list. We got a long way to go before our wish list and his wish list get together, I think. But, but I agree to Jason's point and, and Andrew and Kevin's point that that's something we ought to have done in short order so that it's ready for, you know, to be prepared for town meeting. I just...
Yeah, I mean, I guess part of the thought was, you know, looking back on timing, what we've done in the past wrong is, you know, 129 Parker Street. And we signed the development agreement the day of the meeting. Our intent was to get the conversation, you know, get the document roadmap done, get it on before the selectmen, which I had planned to have on this evening for discussion. Okay, what, what do you guys like on there? What don't you like on there? And get it on paper and, and the board have the discussion. Now, I mean, clearly, at all times, it was always expressed that the negotiation and the development agreement is, you know, held with the board.
If you're gonna negotiate with the developer, shouldn't we set up an appointment for you to meet with them? Perhaps a subgroup?
Sure.
We'll figure that out.
Quickly?
Yeah.
So, the, being that the easement for the rail trail is a piece of that puzzle, what is that, what is a, a lack of action or something on that, how does that affect the rail trail? Or does it?
Let's not bring up that topic outside of executive session, since it's an acquisition of land and easement.
I'm not specifically asking about the acquisition piece. I'm just asking about the project in general.
I mean, I think the acquisition piece is, is pretty clear on what are, what we're allowed to do and not do, based on the, you know, D.O.T. and easement acquisition requirements and what we can and can't put in a document.
No, I'm, I'm just talking about timing-wise. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not getting into, I don't want to get into that stuff that, that Bill referenced, you know, that, that legal piece of it. I'm just asking, what's the, you know, what the timing of that whole situation?
For spring town meeting?
If it affects it or doesn't affect it, yeah.
Yeah. That would be in line with the time line for the rail trail project. If it was all...
Coincidentally, yeah, we're gonna be in a position to negotiate around town meeting.
We're gonna be starting, we should get the clearance, et cetera. Hopefully, they were talking potentially by mid-April to actually start to discuss easements with property owners and move forward. Okay.
So, to clarify, 129 Acton Street aside, the town has already authorized the Board of Selectmen to negotiate for rail trail easements.
Right.
And we plan to...
Federal government has...
At town meeting.
The town has when we're legally allowed to.
Right, when, when we are permitted to do so.
Right, which I understand. And I guess the, the question I was really asking was, how, you know, if, I understand the executive session piece, but if we, if these, if this, if those things don't flow together, how does that back up or delay, or does it delay or does it not delay the, the rail trail? You know, that, how does that all fit together?
It shouldn't because they're two separate situations. With or without the development proposal, we would be discussing the easement with them at some point in the future.
Okay.
All right, I have nothing else. Over, under, new, old. I do have something, don't I, Kevin?
Yes.
We have a request from town clerk for board approval of a ballot question for the May 5, 2015 town election. And this is the, the vote by the town on the charter amendments, the town charter amendments that had been approved at the May 2014 annual town meeting. And the last step, last step to enacting them is a ballot vote at a town election. And that's about right, isn't it, Kevin? So, I have here a, a motion written up in its dated March 17th, today's date. And the motion is to notify the town clerk that the question indicated on this, on this paper dated March 17th shall be placed on the ballot for the May 5, 2015 town election. And as I said, it involves the approval of the charter amendments proposed for the May 19, 2014 annual town meeting. May 19th, 2014 annual town meeting. So that was a motion. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Actually, a very nice summary. It's going to be a very large ballot. It is. But, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five zero.
Kevin, do you have that in a Word document that you might be able to forward out?
I absolutely can.
This?
Yeah, it's in PDF only for the purpose of viewing.
Yeah, that's fine, too. Do we have it?
It's in Dropbox.
Oh, sorry, yeah. If you want it specifically Word document, I get that, but there's a PDF of it that says ballot, ballot question with a date.
So there's a yes, no. Do I just check it?
Yeah.
Wait, no. That's the article.
That's part of the article. I'll just, I'll put approve five as...
Okay. Here, you can have it. I don't mess with town clerk stuff. All right. So other old new business. Jason?
Real quick, we got a, the emergency, was it the emergency management presentation down at the library a few weeks ago? I actually heard from folks who are not from Maynard who attended, who thought it was spectacular and actually was better than the one in their town. So I wanted to pass that along.
We're charging them admission from now on?
Was that the senior one?
I believe so.
Myself and chief?
Yeah, both chiefs were there, I think.
No, myself and fire chief.
Okay.
Yeah. And a representative from team and representative from MIM. Yeah, it was good. They had, we had good discussion. Good, kind of low level, but good for the population that was there. Good to hear.
Anything else?
No, most of it.
David?
Yeah, a couple of quick things. First, I wanted to congratulate Representative Hogan on her St. Patrick's Day event from last Friday with the boys and girls, raising money for the Boys and Girls Club, which she held over at the, at the Maynard Country Club. Another good opportunity to allow people to get in and see the changes that have been done over at the, at the country club. It was good attendance there and everybody seemed to have, have a pretty good time for a good cause and she should be congratulated and thanked for having that in Maynard and bringing people to our community. Second question is really a question for Kevin. Just wondering, is it a policy in town hall? If somebody applies for a position within town hall, do we send them a letter saying thank you for your application? Either we haven't chosen you or we are going to consider... Do we send it on every applicant, every...
Yeah, we usually do a, later in the process, though, we do it pretty much when we're, after you've made it a hire. We typically will send kind of a blanket one that says, you know, we received your application, thank you. For those that we've interviewed and not selected, we would send an actual more formal letter, you know, thank you for your interview, et cetera.
For the ones that don't get selected for an interview, do they get notified?
They get one as well, yeah.
They do?
Yeah.
Everyone gets a no letter except the hired person.
Okay.
Hired individual will receive an offer letter, but we usually, any position, always communicate.
Yeah, we do, we do the same thing at our office. I just wanted to make sure because I was thinking about, it's another way to reflect the town's, you know, customer service attitude towards, you know, knowing that somebody just applies, they're not just forgotten.
Right. What we do is initially send something out to everybody saying thank you for your application. We'll review it. If we decide to move forward with you, we'll be in touch. That's an automatic that happens right at the end.
Yep.
After we've, you know, selected a candidate, we send the positions and fill, thank you for your interest. And then those that we've interviewed get something even more formal that essentially says, although you were a good candidate, qualified, et cetera, we've decided on another candidate.
All right. Okay.
Yeah. Unfortunately, like the private sector, they have the auto-generated, so when you submit an application, you usually will get something back that says thank you for applying. But usually if it's, if it's received by an administrative assistant, like I think with this position, Stephanie had sent them all.
Facilities?
Yeah.
With the facilities ones, I sent an email to all the applicants because all but one of them sent their applications in via email. So that was the initial acknowledgement that we'd received, your application would be in further contact.
Yep.
And now we're at the tail end of the process. We're starting to get phone calls from people, but everyone will get it written.
Okay.
There is, the police and fire handler hiring outside of town hall office, so I can't speak for them, but I know both of our chiefs tend to be very thorough, so I'm pretty confident that they do similar things.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Chris?
Good.
Kevin?
That MBA parking survey, was there a target end date they're looking for?
Um, I don't know if we put one on that. I was working with...
They just sent us the written draft and we're giving them some feedback and then they're going to get it out. So we'll get it.
So they probably presented a meeting like last time?
Yeah, absolutely. Their intention is to come before the board at a later time, present findings and sort of, you know, their hopes and wishes and recommendations as a group. Two individuals specifically within the MBA that are sort of spearheading it, Tim Hess and John Hobson from Serendipity, the kind of subcommittee, if you will.
And the, for the brewery to operate, it would need a license from us and a license from the state still? Is that right?
It would need, yeah, so they would need a food operation license from the health department. They would need a common vixial license and all alcohol license and, you know, they would get approval through ABCC.
And we still have an available one?
No. We have an available beer and wine license, which I've discussed with them. That license we thought was, was in, if you will, in someone's hands if they came in, specifically Willie's Phillies came in and requested an application, had conversations, but they have yet to submit anything. So at this point, it's still available.
How about the license from the gentleman that is...
That was my next question. There we go.
It's available June 30th at this point.
Two of them.
Yeah. And the owner of Full House Group is aware of that. So I think they're kind of watching. They're watching that and obviously they're not looking to put out additional money that they don't have to. So if they can get a license at the town rate, then that's what they hope to do.
Yes.
So when you see them standing at the front door of town hall before it opens on July 1st, you don't know exactly what's going on.
At this point, they are, I mean, as far as when they become available, they are at the top of the list. We had another one, that sort of a change when the ownership changed with Roasted Peppers. But, so at this point, they are the first on the list for an all alcohol.
There's actually a list, right? I mean, they formally expressed interest and it's on the list.
Someone came in this morning and if they actually put in an application, we'll add them to the list.
What does, what license does the Indian restaurant have?
They have an all alcohol.
So there's two all alcohols that have the potential to come up.
Correct. And we have a home rule petition into the legislature for an additional six.
Right. But the, is that likely, that likely to be here by that time?
Find out next, next meeting when she comes in.
Yeah, Representative Hogan's told us that the process can be slow, but...
I think that might be fall versus summer.
She's familiar with the process since Hudson just did it last year.
I think the previous discussion with her was six to nine months. So it just went in, so.
It's been filed the session. I mean, another option that they have is they could acquire the available beer and wine license, which I've had a discussion, is they have a property, they have a business there, at least, they could put in for that and then keep that up and keep doing what is available, but I don't know. At least that way it puts all the licenses in somebody's hands, specifically for when it goes to the ABCC for the additional license requests. And I discussed that with them last week, so they were contemplating that option. But worst case, I mean, even at worst case, they could still function with a beer and wine license. It's not what they want to do, but ultimately, they want an all alcohol, but if, if for some reason they weren't able to do that, they could still have the available beer and wine and still operate and function for the time being. So they...
Just as a hypothetical, can we award licenses prior to opening? Is there like a...
Yeah, because they'll have a, they have a...
They have a plan.
They have a plan, they have a lease. Yeah, that's, that was my point.
Is that a plan? They don't need a start date or anything?
Correct. Yeah. I mean, they probably would identify start date themselves of all 15.
Sort of the opposite of the board's desire to not have a dormant license when there's no property.
Right.
And you gave somebody some time to acquire property. In this case, you'd be going in the opposite direction.
They have a, according to law regs, the way I read them, they have a plan that's produced with a floor plan that's been approved by the local licensing authority. We have the authority to grant them the license. So that's what they need to do.
Okay.
Correct.
Chairman, that's going to be discussed at the EDC meeting in April. I saw you look up as Selectmen Gavin spoke and anticipated what was in your head.
No, I wasn't going to ask. Maybe it was in my head.
It was actually on last month's agenda and it got tabled because of other things.
Yeah, I seem to recall it. Well said. Well said. So we're done for the regular part of our meeting. Now we're going to go into executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real, real property and after the executive session, the meeting will not convene, so I'm going to make a motion to that. In fact...